Is this on? Is this on? The... Good evening. Good evening. The peace of Christ be with you all. It is on. Is that better? Okay. No? Hello? The peace of Christ be with you all. Folks? Good evening. We have a lot of people yet to arrive. I really expect all of these seats to be full. But I understand that 64 is backed up and we'll just... We'll be gracious as people walk in after we've already begun, if that's all right with you. Can you not hear?
That's as loud as it goes.
Okay. If I get closer, does that help? Help me remember to do that. My name is Cherry Peters. I'm currently serving as moderator of the Presbyterian, although the job is up for grabs. Sorry. Welcome to this special meeting of the Presbyterian of the James, called to receive the report of the Strategic Plan, Staffing Structure, and Financial Review Task Force, to act on their motions. Just some housekeeping information. Bathrooms are located... You can go out this door and around to your right, or you can cut through the kitchen, if that's all right with the Kirk people are okay with that. But there are bathrooms over in that side of the building. If you have any questions, there are some folks around that know the Kirk that can point you. I want to thank Gaten Kirk and her volunteers for hosting us tonight. They have been so generous with their time and their facilities. Please note, we're recording tonight's meeting. I want to recognize ruling elder Steve Hicks, who has again volunteered to be our parliamentarian at the stated clerk's request. Thanks for your assistance, Steve. It's very comforting to me to have a parliamentarian over my shoulder. I also want to acknowledge our vice moderator, Josh Andrushevsky, who once again will be acting as sergeant-at-arms. The Vanna White of timing. Concerning participation in the meeting for people on Zoom. If you're on the phone and you want to raise your hand, you press star nine. I'm assuming... Do we have anybody on the phone tonight? We have our two? Okay. That you guys know you're supposed to hit star nine to raise your hand, to vote, ask a question, speak in favor or against. For those of you on Zoom, you know the rules. We've done this a lot. For the folks here in the Kirk who wish to be heard, please line up in the aisles. This is when we get to debate. This is the... The signs are up. This is the four side of the room, if you want to speak in favor of a motion. This is in the side aisle, if you want to line up to speak against a motion. And that's going to give me the ability to alternate between pro and con. So I appreciate your cooperation in that. And then everybody can like go out on the center aisle. You'd speak into this microphone right here. During debate, we'll be trying our best to alternate. People on Zoom will raise their hand to speak, and somebody will message you when you're near the front of the line to find out whether you want to speak for and against. And then they will get the word to me magically to... On whom to call. So if you all will be patient with us while we try and make this work, so we can do this as fairly and as balanced as possible. Mr. Stated Clerk, would you like to go over the rules of the Presbyterian meetings? Yes, that's fine. You want to... Whatever.
Most of the rules have already been discussed, but I want to focus on the sixth one. If you want to make a motion, the forms are right here on this table. And please bring it to me, because I'm going to have to type it up so it can be displayed for the folks that are on Zoom. Debate on all debatable motions need to be limited to three minutes, one time per person. The vote count is going to be tallied by the Zoom administrator, and the folks over there brought to me. I'll compile them, report them to the moderator. And that's about it. That's the high points. Are there any questions about the rules of the meeting? Madam Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Most votes will take place in three groups, as you know, on Zoom, in person, and on the phone. Same procedure we've used over and over again. I don't think anybody's going to be confused or surprised by it, except for privacy, we will be taking at least two votes by written ballot. Zoom participants' votes are always anonymous. In any case, phone participants' votes cannot be made anonymously, but only the administrators will know who they are. Ballots will be distributed in the room and collected by tellers, who will bring them forward to be tallied with the votes from the Zoom poll on the phone. To do this, tellers will be moving down the aisles, handing out ballots. Take a ballot. There are pens in the back of the chair in front of you. Take a ballot. When everyone in the row has received a ballot and marked it, pass them back. There'll be a box you can pass back and forth. Please don't fold your ballots, if that's all right. Place them face down in the box that's coming around. It takes longer to unfold the ballots and count. So we'll appreciate your patience with that. Now is the perfect time to make sure you're sitting in the proper section. If you are not eligible to vote, you should be sitting over here in the rightmost section. If you're currently sitting in the middle and the left sections, you must be eligible to vote. And that helps us sort out... In long rows like this, it's hard to be able to see people's name tags to get the right voting in the right place. Mr. Stated Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, we have a quorum.
Then I declare that we have a quorum and call this special meeting of the Presbyterian of the James to order. I'd like to start with prayer. Gracious God, we have all come tonight having given up something to be here. Maybe it was a long drive from home to Richmond. Maybe it was dinner with our children, or Bridge, or Mahjong, or the driving range. Heck, maybe it was just a chance to sit quietly and read a book. But here we are. Lord, there has only been one perfect person, and it isn't any of us. But our marching orders are to love each other as He loved us. Sometimes that's easy, sometimes that's hard. Sometimes we climb into bunkers because we're afraid of each other. Instead, help us to lean on You, God, when we are afraid. Sometimes we crawl into echo chambers to be reassured that we are right, because doubting ourselves is frightening. Help us to be brave enough to listen to the thoughts of others, however far they may be from our thoughts, with the perspective that You, God, are leading all of us through this time of uncertainty. The task before the POJ tonight is to find a way forward that addresses our financial, structural, and society challenges, so that we can fulfill the role of the POJ in God's beloved kingdom on earth. Help us recognize in each other our shared passion to lead the POJ to a place that nourishes our congregations, sustains our members, and serves Your will. Amen. It's important for us to recognize that we are meeting today on the traditional land of the Powhatan people, an extinct Native American tribe. We acknowledge our debt to the Powhatan people for stewarding this land throughout the generations. Furthermore, we pay our respects to the Matapunai, Upper Matapunai, Pamunkie, Chickahominy, Rapa Hanukk, Monakin, and Padawamak, who continue to reside in and care for their ancestral lands within the bounds of our Presbyterian. We are grateful to be their neighbors. I now call on Reverend Janet James, moderator of Mission Council, for the adoption of the agenda. Good evening, Janet.
Good evening, moderator. The agenda can be found on page one of the packets, and this comes from a committee, so no second is required. Therefore, the agenda is on the floor.
Thank you, Janet. Does anyone object to this motion? Hearing no dissent, the agenda is approved by acclamation. Thank you, Janet. Let me also welcome any corresponding members who may be joining us. I know we're expecting at least three. Warren Lussain and Renita Page. Well, Warren is here. He's over there. And Barbara Chalfont is supposed to be on Zoom. If you can... I don't know if you can spot her or not. Are there any others? All right. And I want to recognize Steve Hicks, which I have already done. They have... I have a motion to seat these corresponding members with voice, but no vote. May I have such a motion? Thank you. Second? Thank you. It is moved and seconded to seat Warren Lussain, Renita Page, Barbara Chalfont, Steve Hicks to today's meeting with voice, but no vote. Does anyone... Pardon me? Okay. Does anyone object to this motion? Hearing no dissent, the motion is approved by acclamation. Before we begin... Got it. Thank you. Before we begin, I want to take just another moment to thank the members of the task force for their work. These folks were gracious enough to say yes when asked to serve, and they have put in an incredible amount of work. An incredible number of hours on their assignment. We need to recognize the tremendous amount of effort they have put in on our behalf. They have brought into crisp focus issues that are impacting the Presbyterian's ability to be as effective as we need to be, teeing up for us the kinds of discussions that can only benefit us. I hope we can all agree on the value to us of taking a hard look at where we are and thinking about what we need to do. Now I call on Barbara Crump, Mike Watson, and Calvin Sidner to present for the task force.
Good afternoon. I am Barbara Crump, member and elder here at the Gaten Kirk.
Get as close as you can to the mic.
Okay. Hello? Could you hear me? We want to affirm our mission and vision, our first stated purpose. Okay. That might be better. Well, it's okay. I don't mind holding it. Okay. All right. Can you hear me better? All right. Our first stated purpose is to study the current strategic plan and its implementation and impact on the life of the Presbyterian, and make recommendations on how we will be adapted in light of our current realities. The initial strategic plan consisted of a mission statement, the why, the vision statements, the what, and a proposed staffing model, the how. We continue to affirm our mission statement. The mission of the Presbyterian of the James is to support leaders, congregations, and ministries, and growing followers of Jesus Christ who joyfully live our God's mission in the world. We also affirm our mission, our vision statements. Christ-centered spiritual growth, specifically as this relates to the Presbyterian staff, resourcing and supporting church leaders, pastors, and ministries. Communication and coordination, specifically as this relates to connecting churches and ministries with one another, and creating vital partnerships. These statements reflect our shared desire for the Presbyterian to support the work of Christ, where it is happening out in our context. Resourcing us, pastoring us, challenging us, and I say especially, growing us closer to one another and our local communities, so that we may meet God's call, Christ's call, in challenging times. Our team has determined that since this plan was adopted in 2021, the how of this plan will happen. The staffing model has not been effective in the way intended, nor is it financially sustainable.
Mike Watson, minister member at Fairfield Presbyterian Church. As way of introduction, we want to just highlight a few of the changes in the second reading of the report. Firstly, a reminder, our task was to study the current strategic plan and its implementation and its life on the Presbyterian, not to develop a new strategic plan, nor evaluate personnel performance. Because our strategic plan is essentially a staffing model, our report, passed unanimously by our team, reflects recommendations on a new model we believe will be more effective at carrying out our mission and vision statements, as well as be more financially sustainable. Following the first reading of our report, we were grateful for and listened to feedback we received, both at the meeting and from the online survey many of you participated in. The second reading of our report features added financial information about sustainability, both the current and the proposed staffing models of our strategic plan. We sought to offer a reasonable way forward, knowing we would not have a balanced budget in the near future, yet also needing to sustain a staffing model that would be forward-thinking enough to help us carry out our mission and vision statements in these challenging times. We believe our proposed model will serve us well while the Presbyterian continues to seek financial sustainability in the long term. Another change in this report, reflected in motion two, is that we determined it's not our team's role to manage the transition process for a potential new staffing model. Personnel matters are the purview of the Mission Council, delegated to the Personnel Committee, and we fully trust them to do what is needed. Our first motion, once again, is this new proposed staffing model. It's our understanding that if it were not to pass as is tonight, and no alternatives would be approved, we would retain the initial three Presbyterian staffing model at the budget numbers they are currently at. Thank you.
Grace and peace, everyone. Grace and peace. Calvin Sidner, minister member, Grace Covenant Presbyterian Church. I'll be addressing motion number three, our hope for tonight's meeting, and the next steps. Our second task was to study present and future sources of funding that would consider, but not limited to, sustainability, per capita, stewardship, and other sources. Our third task was to recommend authorized uses of the Church and Ministries Development Fund, the Genesis and Generations Fund, and any additional POJ reserve funds. And in consultation with the trustees, recommend a financially sustainable annual draw off the POJ Reserve Fund to support the annual Presbyterian budget. Following feedback from our first reading, we have determined that we simply have not had enough time or expertise to make long-term recommendations needed to restore the POJ to financial viability. Therefore, our third motion this evening reflects a process we believe will be best addressed for these things. To help simplify the meeting this evening, a few motions from our first reading have been moved to suggestions in the second reading. We are not proposing them as motions in this report. However, we strongly encourage that all of the Presbyterian be mindful of them. We hope this report will begin many more conversations about how we can faithfully live into our mission and vision statements. This evening, we pray God's guidance as we faithfully seek Christ's will for our Presbyterian, and that at the end of this process, we will find reconciliation, wholeness, and peace.
Thank you so much. Before we can begin on motions and debate, I think it would be helpful for Janet James to make a comment at this point. Janet?
Madam Moderator, as moderator of the Mission Council, we felt we needed to say this. The Mission Council has no idea which way the vote will go tonight. And I have no interest in influencing anyone either way. But I do want to assure the body that the Mission Council has plans to go forward either way the vote goes.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And I have one more thing to do before we kick off. I would really appreciate it if Carrie Foster would offer a prayer. Reverend Foster?
Before we pray, I'm going to have to make one request of everyone here in this room. If you are not a child of God, I encourage you to leave the room now. Better? All right. Request one more time, in loudness. If you are not a child of God, please exit the room now. You all have made a very specific claim just now. You have claimed Christ as the guidance of your life. You have said that the called journey you are on now means that every living soul in this room specifically is either your brother or your sister. And Christ has told us over and over again that we are indeed our siblings' keeper. So with that in mind, let us turn our servant hearts to God, and let us pray. Loving God, your people all along have always asked for signs. We wish to see the waters parted. We want to see waters spring forth and just nourish the land. We ask our leaders to bring to us food and nourishment. We continue to ask and ask and ask, and we wear our leaders down. Yet, You lead us all. You bring strength to our leaders. You bring fortitude to our own souls. You hearken us to a calling that sets us apart from the rest of the world. But that setting apart is not to take us away, but to send us out. We are the keepers of the blessings of the world. And here, in this time, in this place, we come to learn how best to pass on that which we have been given. Let us speak our hearts as a child of God. Let us act toward one another the way we would act towards You. May we leave this place fully knowing that we have left no harm upon any of our siblings, that we have been as close to Christ as we can as human beings, and we allow the Spirit to cover the distance between us, each other, and You. Guide us completely in all that we do, and bless us during this time of discussion. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Foster. All right. We're ready to begin to act on motions. We will begin by taking up consideration of the first motion concerning the staffing model. I now call on Reverend Amy Starr Redwine to introduce the first motion.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Amy Starr Redwine, minister member, First Presbyterian, Richmond. On behalf of the task force, I would like to officially make the first motion and speak to it. I will read it. We move that the Presbyterian of the James replace our current staffing model with the following staffing model to fulfill our strategic plan in light of current financial realities. A general presbyter for Christ-centered spiritual growth, full-time, head of staff, replacing the current three-presbyter model. Stated clerk, full-time, replacing the current part-time stated clerk role with the addition of responsibilities for communication and coordination as per the strategic plan's vision statement. Maintain the current associate for administration, full-time. Continue to contract financial work and contract for communications and technology support as needed and as budget allows. Our intention is that this motion will move the Presbyterian of the James toward financial sustainability and organizational effectiveness. Reducing the number of positions will begin the process of decreasing the overall expenditures of the Presbyterian and make communication and coordination more effective. Although some might say that the model of a general presbyter and full-time stated clerk simply returns the POJ to a former staffing model, our position is that this represents a new path forward by separating out the presbyter and clerk roles, which has happened in the recent past, but further back, those roles have always been vested in one position. During our work, we interviewed each member of the Presbyterian staff. And what we heard from them all was that the administrative load of updating, creating, and maintaining policies, procedures, and processes was taking up a tremendous amount of time and energy. Our intention is that this model frees up the general presbyter and other staff by giving the stated clerk responsibility for administration as well as communication and coordination. As far as we are aware, this would be the first time the POJ has a full-time stated clerk. This would allow the general presbyter for Christ-centered spiritual growth to focus on building relationships throughout the POJ with pastors, churches, and other ministries, as well as serving the Presbyterian as head of staff. Having a stated clerk to organize, update, maintain, and coordinate policies, procedures, and processes for POJ staff councils and committees would also free up POJ volunteers to focus on their work without being burdened by administrative tasks. Having a full-time stated clerk would also facilitate clear and timely communication throughout the POJ and from meeting to meeting, going beyond the stated clerk roles as outlined in the Book of Order, and further reducing the POJ's need for additional staff. That is why we are recommending a full-time clerk and not a part-time clerk. Again, our intention with this motion is to strengthen the POJ's ability to effectively fulfill its mission and vision while putting the POJ on a path to greater financial sustainability. Thank you.
All right. We have the motion. For people in the room wishing to speak on this item, please line up in the side aisles. If you wish to speak in favor of the motion, line up on your left, my right. If you wish to speak against, line up in this side aisle. When you're called on, come up to the microphone. Speak... Identify yourselves, speak, and then you can go back through the center aisle or however works. Question?
What do we do if we want to ask a question that we are not arguing for or against, but we want to ask a question?
Pick a side. It's fine. It's fine. Just say when you start, "I just have a question." That's fine.
Does the motion need a second?
No, I don't believe so. It comes from a task force. Right? Okay. Just wonderful to have this gentleman back here to check with. One more note that I want to say before we begin debate. I feel certain that a number of people in this meeting wish to make their opinions heard. Just guessing, but I feel certain. If someone else has already said essentially what you're planning to say, please be considerate of the whole body. Please be courteous enough not to take the floor. To quote our famous philosopher, Jerry Reed, if you're old enough to remember who that is, "We got a long way to go and a short time to get there." So by all means, speak your piece. But if somebody has already made your point, we would really appreciate not having it repeated a lot. All right. We have someone waiting to speak in favor of the motion. You would like to go first?
Yes. Moderator, I'm...
Moderator, I'm Leann Ring, Presbyter for Relational Care. I speak against this task force report and process. Since at least February of 2023, not even six months into this new staffing model, we've been working in a hostile work environment. Not because of the work that needed to be done, not because we didn't have clear guidelines from the Presbyterian of their expectations, but because people chose to have parking lot conversations rather than honest, face-to-face conversations with us. We can do better. When I train PNCs on behalf of the COM, I tell them that this call process is a shared act among the congregation, the pastor, and the Presbyterian. It is this partnership and connection that we rely on as we all seek the will of Christ in the process. It's a conversation that includes standards and expectations, and it's a conversation that continues into at least the first full year of ministry for this new pastor. Yet in this staffing model, the three presbyter's were not welcomed into this type of relationship. We should do better. The teams and committees of the Presbyterian need administrative support. And this administrative support would allow an executive presbyter to do her job. That is the fiscal responsibility that this report could have chosen to address. But I didn't see that. We should expect better. The Presbyterian created the staffing structure and then called Flo, Barbara, and I to do this work. Now this report is asking the Presbyterian to vote to dismantle the structure. And yet it feels as though the report is blaming us for creating the model in the first place. I expected better. In June, I asked the Presbyterian to consider a third way to respond to the stress and anxiety in the system that spoke of a faithful response to our biological responses of fight or flight. I invited you to flock, that when times are hard, instead of attacking, especially in hidden and harmful ways, that we could make the choice to celebrate our connection to one another and to this important ministry. That is not the choice of this report. I had hoped for better. I was unnamed in the original report and asked the task force to consider what that meant based on what we know of the study of unnamed women in Scripture. Tonight, this report lists my name, but it spells it incorrectly. That might not matter to you, but it hurts me. So I rise to speak against this categorization categorization of my work and my value in the Presbyterian. Because of this, I will vote against the recommendation.
Thank you. You wish to speak for?
Madam Moderator, my name is Reverend Dr. Rebecca Tucker-Mottley. I am a covenant pastor at Bon Air Presbyterian Church. I would like to speak against this motion.
One second. Can you hear her? Lean closer to the microphone. Thank you.
You can take the microphone and scoot it closer to your face as well.
I think she just solved the problem. Excuse us, go ahead.
Reverend Dr. Rebecca Tucker-Mottley, Covenant Pastor at Bon Air Presbyterian Church. I will be speaking against this motion. Shame on us. Shame on us when there is a financial issue. I wouldn't even call it a crisis at this point. Maybe you would, I would not. Shame on us for going directly to staff cuts. How are we as a Presbyterian going to mentor struggling churches who say we can no longer afford our pastor, but we love them so much? We love the work they're doing, but we just can't afford them anymore? How are we going to look them in the eye and say, "Well, you need to figure it out. Let's figure it out together," when they look at what we're doing tonight? And they say, "Well, you fired your presbyter's because you couldn't afford them." Shame on us. If permitted, I would like to ask a clarifying question. According to the report, the cutting of the three presbyter's saves us under $200,000, which I'll admit is a significant amount of money. We only have two presbyter's right now because we ran one of them off. So I would like to see the numbers updated to reflect how much money we're actually saving because the numbers that we presented don't reflect our current situation.
Hang on a second. We have our financial manager in the room. Cindy, would you like to make a comment? Have I put you on the spot too much?
I don't, I don't, I can run the numbers and give that to you, but I can't pull them right now to compare.
I just would like to let that stand.
May I speak to that question?
The proposal, we would not know what offer would go to the new staffing. I would have to have a number to compare.
My point is that the number reflects three presbyter's, but we only have two right now. And so they're not up-to-date numbers.
So if I could just respond to that, so you understand what the task force was working with. We were comparing the current model that we have, which is a three presbyter model until the Presbyterian changes that.
Okay, I understand that. My point is, we've completely stepped past where we are. We were with three presbyter's. We have two presbyter's.
But according to the model that we have?
I understand what you're saying. I hope you hear what I'm saying.
Yeah.
White of water, moderator. We have had two in the negative. For balance, should we now have some in the affirmative?
I agree with that. I absolutely agree with that, Tom. I'm a little concerned that the folks on Zoom are going to feel left behind. So are you all right if I call for somebody speaking in favor on Zoom?
Sure.
Okay, that's where I'd like to go. Do we have someone?
David Thoman, are you, would you like to speak for or against the motion? We have two others who are against the motion. We only have three hands raised. Four. Okay, please, okay. So David Thoman.
Ah, we have David Thoman online on Zoom who is going to speak in favor of the motion. David, have you unmuted yourself?
Yes, I have. Madam Moderator, David Thoman, Ruling Elder, Summit Presbyterian Church, Stafford, Virginia. I stand to speak in favor of the first motion. Again, the strategic plan vision identifies what we want to achieve. The mission statement states why we want to achieve it, and the staffing model addresses how we achieve it. This motion is not rocket science. This motion is strictly about staffing model the Presbyterian should adopt to replace the 2021 Presbyterian staffing model in order to achieve the strategic plan. It's not about individuals. It is not about hiring and firing. It's not about levels of compensation. It's not about how it is implemented. In 2021, the Presbyterian adopted the current leadership staffing model of three presbyter's and part-time stated clerk. I hope that by the end of this evening, we will have adopted a new staffing model. If we do not, then we still have the 2021 staffing model. We'll continue to be our staffing model. It will then mean hiring the third presbyter, which is currently vacant. That vacancy, we requested not be filled until the task force had finished its job. It means, again, hiring a third presbyter for the vacant position, imaging nearly $700,000 a year of our reserves and finding ourselves in a financial crisis in three to four years, where we can no longer draw upon our reserves. I don't believe anyone here this evening wants that. The task force has proposed an alternative staffing model. We need to leave here this evening with that model or an alternate model. For example, if we were to adopt an alternate model of two presbyter's and a part-time stated clerk, that is a new staffing model for the Presbyterian. We would then enter a period of transition. Motion two then comes into play. New job descriptions would be developed, compensations determined, metrics developed, mechanics established. This first motion, if defeated, if we defeat the first motion, then we do not have a new staffing model. Instead, we have the 2021 staffing model that I believe no one in the room wants. Let us approve motion one by finding the new staffing model.
Thank you. And I think for clarity, for those of you who may want to realize, David is on the task force.
Say that again. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said, I just wanted to make sure people knew David is on the task force. And so that you knew where he was speaking from, because everybody in the room is seated together. So I just wanted to make sure we were clear. Is there anybody else on Zoom? And you have people on Zoom who want to speak against? We have two of them.
We have two on, yes. We have two people who have hands raised, but we'd like to speak against.
Let's take one of them. Robert Johnson, you want to unmute yourself and speak? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I have three points. Number one, I don't think this is the right answer. I, as I've said earlier, the strategic plan is not the right plan. It's an old plan from before the pandemic. The Presbyterian has changed and the world has changed. So staffing to meet this outdated model isn't going to do us any good. I believe that we need to go back and rethink what we're about as a Presbyterian and what we're being called to do in this hour. Number two, if we're going to dismiss these folks who have served well and with dedication, I don't think that we should replace them one-on-one, you know, barely saving any money over what we're doing now. Instead, we should go to, as I have suggested before, a half-time presbyter and a half-time stated clerk. I've done the presbyter job before. Although it's not ideal, it can be done in 20 hours a week. And I don't suggest that forever. But until we have a plan that we can live with and that is actually appropriate for right now, I think that's the right way to go. So again, I just, I think this is the wrong way. This is the wrong approach. It doesn't save the money we need to save. It doesn't reorder the priorities that we need to reorder. And I just, I find this to be insufficient. And I will be voting against the proposal. And I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Do we have anybody in the room who wants to speak in favor of the report?
Alex Krieger, pastor at Bon Air Presbyterian Church. And I speak in favor of the motion. And this is not easy standing here in favor of the motion because I have a ton of respect for everyone in this room. And this is a very hard time. I've only been here three years in our Presbyterian. I speak in favor of it, but I also have to, I want to first say that both Dr. Flo Barbie Watkins and Reverend Leann Ring have been incredible colleagues and supporters. They have brought about a lot of transparency to our Presbyterian. They've brought great support, have started our new worshiping communities team, have been very supportive colleagues. And this is no way reflects, I am not speaking at all because in any way it reflects their work. I very much agree with what Leann also said earlier, where it has seemed like the last two years that this, the plan in 2019 and 2020 not being financially workable right now has been blamed at the people we hired. And that, I am sorry that that has felt that way for the last couple of years. I also am feeling in this room right now that this task force, which has worked for the last nine and a half months, is now the same way. That we are in a very bad space and are getting the same way blamed back. That looking at the numbers that have been shared, looking at where giving and support has come, which has come way, way down. And I think a very big thing is we need to look at why we are as churches doing that to the Presbyterian. Where numbers across the board, including in the last two years, that has not miraculously changed. The main reason though I'm for this motion is that we formed a task force. We asked these, both pastors and ruling elders, to serve, to do this work. Reading the report, I believe you have done that very, very well, thoughtfully, considerate. You have not done the parking lot conversations, but have listened to people and really cared about the present and future of our Presbyterian. And I think when we ask a group to do this very hard work, to bring this forward, I know it's maybe not the results we want to hear, but I think, I see that the work was done well. And I, so I speak in favor of supporting the work as hard as that is and blessings of peace for our Presbyterian, whatever happens from this meeting.
Thank you, Alex. All right, let's see. Do we have anyone? We do have someone standing. You wish to speak in opposition?
Yes, I do.
Good afternoon. I am Joselyn Shipman. I am co-moderator of the Anti-Racism Committee. And first I do want to say, I thank all of you for the work you've done. I know it is difficult for all of you. But what I would like to say is, yes, I am rising to speak against the motion. And understanding that the situations presented are beyond your scope. The revised report, while money-driven, does not address the statements or questions presented in the first review. There has only been a switch of emphasis to the recommendations of the task force that does not affect, that does not affect, does not address the staffing plan. All right, there would be no need to replace two competent and dedicated women on the POJ staff if task force moves two and three of the proposed moves are implemented. While working under the systems in place at the POJ, the worst that the women did was to begin to bring to light the manner in which the POJ was not living up to and into the Articles of Agreement approved and signed by the POJ 2020, 1988. We no longer have Barbara Shaw-Font. Will we continue to allow systems that were put in place and maintained over the past 30 years to continue to muddy the waters of our congregations and our pastors? Our people, our congregations, our councils, all Presbyterian of the James stands on the precipice, walking until what we read in our sacred texts. The plan is not, at this time, addressing what we need according to their, to the vision statement. They are not offering support. The burdens will be on the pastors and congregations going forward. I also would like to say, this is a time when all entities of the POJ could be likened to the angels in John 5, who would come stir the muddy waters at Pasidah so that we can begin the healing of every systemic model of power and privilege. I do say that there appears to be sexism, racism within the POJ that if we begin now, we're standing at a time now where we can go forward. Do not let competent, dedicated women go. People who are moving forward, working with congregations and pastors, let the POJ move forward.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Zoom at this point. We should have at least one person waiting to speak against. Nobody to speak for. All right, Gary Charles, can you unmute and speak?
This is Gary Charles. I'm pastor at Cove Presbyterian Church in Coesville, Virginia. And I'm speaking against the motion number one with a great deal of appreciation for the work of the task force. It is an impossible job. And what they've done is, particularly in the financial arena, is they've helped us to see that this is fundamentally a financial crisis that we are in. It's not a financial bad time. It's a financial crisis. To be doing the deficit spending that we have been doing for the last several years and projecting forward is just physically irresponsible. And so I'm speaking against motion number one largely because I think the notion of having two full-time executive staff members is not physically prudent or possible based alone on the material sent to us from the based alone on the material sent to us from the task force. I happen to believe that several years ago, when we adopted this new staffing model, we, we collectively had our heads in the sand looking at where is that money coming from? It's not coming from congregational giving. That is, continues to decline. There are so many, there's just so much you can use from reserves before there are no longer reserves. So I think I would prefer that motion number one be referred back to Mission Council for consideration on how best to staff, and not just the executive staff, the entire staff, how we can afford to do what we're called to do. And otherwise, we're going to be back here two years, three years from now with different staff facing the same issue. So I speak against motion number one, but for some different reasons for what others have spoken against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend Charles. He didn't actually move to refer it. Are you intending to move to refer it back, Reverend Charles?
I would, I would gladly move that we refer number one to the Mission Council for consideration and action and report back to the, to the full Presbyterian before any staffing, final staffing changes are made.
What do we do about getting that in writing?
Send it to the stated clerk by email.
Gary, can you send that to stated clerk, stated clerk at POJ? Presbyterianofthejames.org?
You're testing my technological capacity here, but I will try.
Hey, I'm the lady that couldn't remember the name of the website, so. Pardon me? Can you type it into the chat?
Type it into the chat.
That's the suggestion from our technical folks.
Let me withdraw that for the time being, and I'll come back to it should I have greater clarity.
He withdrew it.
All right. Again, against? Don't know? Let's, can we find out? Oh, he's not, okay, maybe it's just a question.
Tom Shields, are you speaking for or against the motion?
Ah, I see. Tom Shields, can you unmute and speak?
Yes, I had, I had submitted a motion. I, I think it's a substitution in place of the current motion.
Yes, sir. You had, you can submit it. That gives it us, that gives it to us in writing so we can put it up on the screen, but you still have to move it.
I have submitted it yesterday.
Now you have to move it before the body, sir.
Okay, could I please move before the body a motion that I submitted on the 25th of September for this meeting?
Do you have the motion in front of you?
I did, I do.
Oh, is your motion not related specifically to the staffing model? Then if not, it's, it's out of order at this point.
It's indirectly related to this model because it talks to a different way to approach it.
No, I think. It's, it's really most directly applicable to the third motion? The one about the financial management?
Point of order, moderator.
Yes, Reverend.
We're having something, an internal discussion up here. I think it would be helpful if the body just heard what the motion is so we can have some idea of how we're going to dispose of it.
Mr. Stated Clerk, would you read it, please?
Steve just says it's out of order, but I'm going to read this anyway. The motion is that the Presbyterian of the James directs the Mission Council to use the task force work to bring recommendations to a called meeting of the Presbyterian of the James no later than November 15th, 2024, that one presents a 2025 POJ budget that is fiscally prudent in its use of reserve funds by not drawing down on reserve funds by more than the generally accepted sustainability drawdown amount of 5% per annum, which is $207,970 based on the January 1st, 2024 value of $4,159,407,000 from the CMDF and GGF. In the fiscal year starting in 2025, and it takes into account the historically decreasing voluntary donations from POJ churches. And two, in concurrence with the task force recommendation that the current POJ executive staffing model be eliminated, the Mission Council shall present a staffing design that can be supported by the fiscally prudent budget limitations of the Presbyterian of the James. This new staffing design should clarify the timing of the elimination of the current executive staff positions and a detailed outline of the transition process and one-time related costs to carry out the transition, such as severance packages, cost of temporary staff to cover POJ responsibilities during the transition.
Thank you. Our parliamentarian has ruled this motion. Oh, wait a minute. What? All right, I take it back. I misunderstood. He has not ruled it as inappropriate. You can't hear me? I was saying that our, I started to say that our parliamentarian had ruled it out of order, but I had misunderstood. He has said, in fact, that it is an appropriate motion at this time. So. We need a second from the floor or the Zoom? We have a second. We have a motion on the floor. That's an interesting question. Was, what was your, is your intent that it substitute for all three motions or just the first one?
I think it primarily dictates the answer to the first one, but it has extreme impact on the other two.
Right. Hang on a second. I'm, just let me, let me consult my little team here. Yes. And, and that's, so that's how we view it. Okay, then. Please bear with me, we got to sort this out.
So does that mean we have to perfect all three motions before we can move on the substitute motion to replace all three?
If I may, we're about to involve you all in this discussion, so listen up. We're going to ask you all if you think this motion is a substitute for the, the task force's motion one or all three of the task force's motions? Because we can't seem to sort it out. We'd like to know the preference of the body. I, I need a motion. Well, we already have a motion. Okay, just, those people who think it's a substitute for just motion one of the task force report, please raise your hands and the same on.
You can, you can raise an inquiry, I mean, request information, but no, the only motion pending right now is.
He's saying that, that she can ask a question, but the only motion pending on the floor is the emotion from the task force. And the question is, what do we do with this new suggested motion?
Laura Sugg, minister member.
Close.
Laura Sugg, minister member, pastor of. I've got my mouth right on it. I am talking right into the microphone. I think the speakers aren't all connected, but. I am projecting quite loudly right now.
That's much better, yes.
I'm Laura Sugg, pastor of South Plains Presbyterian Church, minister member. I rise to ask a question and highlight, does this possible substitute motion say within the motion, I offer the following substitute motion to replace all the task force's recommendations? Does it say that? Yes, it does. Does it say in number two, all about staffing patterns? Does it? Does it refer to staffing patterns in number two of the substitute motion?
It refers to them, yes.
Yes. That's, those were my two questions.
The question from the parliamentarian is, the immediately pending motion is motion one from the task force, which deals just with the current staffing model. Is it the body's desire that this substitute substitute for all three of the task force's motions? Keep that in mind because that will have a big impact on how the rest of the meeting goes.
And I have somebody on Zoom too. She was here, then Zoom, then, then Nancy.
Melissa Phillips, ruling elder at Salisbury. I have a question, I rise to a question. Half of us could not hear or understand the reading of the motion, and half of us can't see it over there. So I wouldn't have any idea how to vote because I have no clue what this substitute motion says.
Would you like me to read it again through the microphone?
That would be lovely.
I would, oh. I offer, this is, this is from Tom Shields. And can you all hear me? No? Okay, let me try that a little louder. Can you hear me now? No.
But I'm not mad at you yet.
How about with this mic? Is that better? Just project, okay. I'm not going to get these two mics near each other because then we'll have feedback. Tom Shields says, "I offer the following substitute motion to replace all of the task force's recommendations, that the Presbyterian of the James directs the Mission Council to use the task force's work to bring recommendations to a called meeting of the POJ no later than November 15th, 2024, that, one, presents a 2025 POJ budget that is fiscally prudent in its use of reserve funds by not drawing down on reserve funds by more than the generally accepted sustainability drawdown amount of 5% per annum, which amounts to $207,970 based on the January 1st value of the reserve funds." I just abbreviated that part. "In the fiscal years starting in 2025, and that it takes into account the historically decreasing voluntary donations from POJ churches." Item two. "In concurrence with the task force's recommendation that the current POJ executive staffing model be eliminated, the Mission Council shall present a staffing design that can be supported by the fiscally prudent budget limitations of the Presbyterian of the James. This new staffing design should clarify the timing for the elimination of the current executive staff positions and a detailed outline of the transition process and one-time related costs to carry out this transition, such as severance packages, cost of temporary staff to cover POJ responsibilities during the transition." That's the motion. Let, I've got, I've got Robert Johnson's hand up, but you've been standing there for a long time. Don't go anywhere. Robert Johnson? He just, he just said, where would I go? Robert Johnson, can you unmute and tell us what you think?
Yes, Robert Johnson, pastor of New Hanover Presbyterian Church. Madam Moderator, it seems to me that if we voted this proposal in, in any of its parts, or rather, if we vote the other proposal in, in any of its parts, we would then have to rescind them in order to vote this one in. So I would think that, that this one, because it touches in many different areas, and we can't just ask, well, is this about the personnel thing? Because it's about all of those things. So it seemed to me that this is something that has to be considered now rather than later, my personal opinion.
Mark Hedberg, ruling elder from River Road Presbyterian Church. I think the question is answered in the first sentence of the proposed substitute. The only motion on the floor currently is motion number one. This goes well beyond motion number one and therefore should be ruled out of order, period.
Thank you. I have no hands up on Zoom, so Nancy?
Moderator Nancy Clark, honorably retired. Just a, maybe a clarification. So if this was a substitute motion even for number one, I believe the task force said that if number one. 1 doesn't pass, we don't address Number 2 and Number 3. So if this was treated as a substitute motion, then that would-- for Number 1, then we would be done if, in fact, the new motion passed.
I don't mean to speak for the Task Force--
I'm asking.
--but I believe that what they said was, if Number 1 doesn't pass, Number 2 is moot, but Number 3 is still up for consideration. Have I got that right?
Thank you for that clarification.
Sir?
I'm here to speak against it if we ever get to it.
All right. Do we have any more questions? I don't see any hands on Zoom. I don't see anybody standing up, except one person to speak against it in the room. What we're asking you all to do is tell us whether this is a substitute motion for the entire set of three motions that the Task Force proposed. Sir?
Okay. I'm just going to speak-- if this is ruled in order, if the substitute motion is ruled in order, I want to speak against that motion. That's not right.
That's-- okay, that's different. Thank you. All right. Are we ready to raise hands? We're voting on whether-- we're voting that this is a substitution for--
Accept the substitute.
Wait a minute. We're voting on whether--
The vote will be on whether or not to accept the motion as presented as a substitute, and that's the only question. You're not voting in favor of any other motion or action. It's just whether this is a substitute that can substitute for all of the other motions.
Thank you. Sir?
Speak against the substitute motion, Albert Knett, Providence Presbyterian Church pastor. There's so much detail and specificity in that motion, I have no idea if we can have a budget next year that would only draw 200,000 from reserve funds. It's just, we can't vote on that tonight without the kind of information we need.
I appreciate your perspective, and forgive me for interrupting, but right now, the question is not whether we're going to vote in favor of what he's suggesting, but whether we're going to accept it as a substitute motion.
Exactly. We should not accept it as a substitute motion. There's too much specificity. I'm all for maybe giving it back to Mission Council, but I'll speak to that later. Thank you.
Thank you. We know what he wants. All right. Online and in the room, are we ready to raise our hands and say, yes, we want to accept this as a substitute motion? All in favor online? Oh, are we going to put a poll up online?
They're just to discuss it. They're not voting on it. They're just to-- we're voting on whether we discuss it as the substitute.
We're voting on whether we accept it as a substitute motion. If we accept it, then we'll discuss the merits of it.
Moderator.
Tom, am I?
Tom Coy. We started out trying to clarify whether this is a substitute motion for the Number 1 motion of our report--
Right.
--or is it a substitute motion for the entire report? That was the question you presented to us, and that's what you're asking us to clarify right now. So let's not talk about voting for or against the substitute. Do we understand the substitute to be either relating to Motion Number 1 or to the entire report of the Task Force?
Thank you. That's correct. All right. Could you all hear what Tom said?
No.
Basically, what he said is, rather than voting-- we started out with the question, do we want to accept this motion as a substitute for Motion 1 in the Task Force report or for all three motions in the Task Force report? That's the question we should be considering.
No.
All right, hang on a second. So if I ask, how many people want to do as Number 1, how many as Number 3, and then if we get that answer, then we vote to accept the substitute motion and start the process of perfecting?
I'm sorry. Did you say that? Say that again.
What I was asking the parliamentarian was, at this point, do we ask people, raise your hands if you want to take it as a substitute for Motion 1, raise your hands, other people, raise your hands if you want to take it as a substitute for Motion 3, for all three motions, and then whichever one of those carries, then we consider accepting it as a substitute motion?
Okay. Why are we-- I'm sorry.
Reverend Shipman, it really will help if you come to a mic. I know you have a lot of voice.
No, I am just trying to understand what you're saying. Are we-- you're asking us to vote on whether or not this motion will be substituted for Motion 1 or the entire thing?
1, 2, and 3. Right.
Okay. Why are we working with this when we're still-- according to Robert's rules of order, is that acceptable? And I'm trying to see here, where it's not addressed on this sheet that's provided. And I'm just-- I'm looking for clarification, because this motion is saying the same thing in a different way. So why are we voting on a motion that's saying the same thing that the Task Force is saying in a different manner? And if I'm confused, I'm not sure who behind me may also, but I'm seeing nods of affirmation on my right.
Let me just lay it-- oh, excuse me. Yes. Reverend Wallace.
A motion has been made, a substitute motion has been made.
Right.
Does it apply to all or some? That's your call as moderator. So I rise to the point of order. You make the call, and you've had the advice of your parliamentarian, and if we don't agree, then we can say we challenge the ruling of the chair. But at this point, it's your call, not, "Ask you what you think, ask you what you think." It's your call.
But I would like to point out that Robert's rules also grants the authority of the chair to ask the Assembly how they wish to handle it. So, Moderator, if you wish to go ahead and say that it is a legitimate substitute, you're welcome to do so, and then there could be an appeal, but--
And I don't have to say a legitimate substitute for what?
Sub--
Yeah, no. You don't-- I mean, you could say that the motion is not appropriate at this time. I mean--
Here's what I'm thinking about. Telling you how I'm thinking about this, I'm just saying this for the point of clarity, and so that if I'm really thinking about this wrong, people can stand up, and I encourage you to challenge my ruling. But here's what I think. I feel like if we accept this substitute motion, if we vote on this as a substitute motion for Number 1, and go through the process of managing a substitute motion, what we have to do there is perfect the original motion, so entertain any other motions that are taken on the first motion from the report. We have to get it to a point where nobody wants to change it anymore.
And that's going to be on Number 1, 2, and 3?
No, I'm saying just on 1.
No, because it's saying it replaces all, so--
Oh, if we don't have to decide between replacing 1 or 3, I thought I was supposed to make a call on that. I thought that's what you just said.
Exactly.
2 and 3 are all-- do the substitute motions have any good name?
Understand, we don't go into that process until we accept it as a motion. I do understand that. What I was addressing was how we deal with it after that. Okay. God help me, I'm going to rule it out of order.
Thank you.
Please. Please, folks. Thank you for that vote of support, but let's not-- Robert's rules doesn't really entertain emotional outbursts from the congregation. So bear with me on that. I'd appreciate it. We are going to rule the substitute motion out of order. And moving on, do we have any other motions? You want to speak on Motion Number 1 from the report.
Yes.
You have the microphone.
Again, I'm Mark Hedberg. I'm a ruling elder from River Road Presbyterian Church, and I stand to speak in opposition to the motion. At the July 30 meeting, the recommendation to abandon the existing staffing model was largely predicated on problems that were identified in the implementation of the three Presbyter model. Implementation problems, of course, are just that, problems in implementation. They tell us very little about the effectiveness or viability of the staffing model itself. The comments at the July 30 meeting were overwhelmingly negative. The latest Task Force report simply shifts its emphasis, though, focusing now on budgetary matters to justify abandoning the existing model. But this new emphasis is misguided. At one level, it's simply a cop-out. It's much easier to say we can't afford it than to do the hard work of righting the existing ship. As a practical matter, it's unlikely to be effective. As the Task Force recognized in its July 30 report, and I quote, "Two full-time positions will neither mark a major shift in staffing expenses nor ensure a quick solution for our current difficulties." Rather than focusing on cuts, we should be focusing on investment, investment in people and in programs that will further the POJ's mission to support its leaders, congregations, and ministries. And as a spiritual matter, while I find the approach totally baffling, Christ's teaching emphasized that money should not be the primary motivator in life's decisions. Instead, we're told to trust in God's provision and generosity to support our spiritual growth and service. I do not see that being honored in what is before us today. So for that reason, I'll be voting against the motion, and I would vouch everyone else to vote against as well.
Thank you. I see no hands on Zoom. I have somebody rising, and you are rising to speak? Thank you for that moment of levity. Dan, you have the microphone.
Thank you, Moderator. Dan Jordanger, ruling elder at Providence Church in Gum Spring, and second tenor in the choir at Ginnor Park Church. I rise to speak against the motion. I want to focus on two things. Before I do that, I want to join the chorus of folks who express gratitude to the Task Force for the work that they have done, and to pray that all of us will not-- will have good feelings about not only the members of the Task Force, but about staff, about all of the folks who are serving this Presbyterian with compassion and love, and a forward-looking and Christ-driven model before us. I wanted to address the financial topic first.
That might be out of order on talking on the first motion.
In terms of how it affects the staffing, and say only that the current staffing has the two Presbyterors, a part-time stated clerk, a full-time administrative person, a part-time communications person, and a part-time contractor for financial matters. I speak only for myself, but as a member of Mission Council, it is my understanding that the Mission Council has no plans to fill the third Presbyterian position. And because that is the case, the cost differential between the current staffing and the staffing in the Item 1, the proposal, is less than it would be if we had three Presbyterians in place. I also want to say that the Task Force report does not talk about severance in the event that our two Presbyterians are terminated, and severance would be an additional cost to the Presbyterian. Lastly, I want to talk about Leanne and Flo, because they have been called to serve this Presbyterian. They are visionary leaders. They are dedicated, and I pray that we leave them in place to do the good work that God has called them to do. And so for these reasons, I ask that the Presbyterian vote against the motion.
Thank you, Dan. I see no hands on Zoom. I see Arch Wallace's hand in the back of the room. Not to call you out, sir. You all are not standing up to take the mic. Just checking. Sir?
I'm Arch Wallace, the-- I have to think about this-- teaching elder at the Brandon Mill Church. I rise to speak in favor of this motion. I'm very thankful for the work that's been done by so many. But I rise to speak in favor because there are two issues that are running around. One is the emotional issue about people we care about, people who are very good at what they do. But the other issue running around is financial, and we're bleeding money. And we can't just say we're not going to pass this and go home and say, "It'll take care of itself." It's costing us $45,000, $50,000 a month, and we need to address that before we go broke. So I'm speaking in favor. I really care deeply about these individuals, but we have to make a decision. If we vote it down, these guys go out of business, and we're sitting here with a problem. So I think we need to vote for it.
Thank you. Flo, are you standing to speak? I'm sorry, I didn't see you. If you don't mind waiting for a moment, thank you.
Thank you, Moderator. Don't start my time yet. Thank you, Moderator. First, let me say--
Identify yourself, please.
I'm sorry. I am Flo Barbie Watkins, Minister Member, Presbyterian of the James.
Thank you. Your back is to the camera, that's why I'm making it a point. There she is. Go ahead.
I first wanted to offer some clarifying comments. A compelling why is the reason that reminds you of what matters and why it's important to do something. Simon Sinek says, "Why represents the core belief or purpose that drives an individual organization." It's not about just what you do or how you do it, but fundamentally about why you do it. Your how is not a staff. If you can't name strategic goals and a visionary direction which has not been done at all, then no staffing model can survive this. This is faulty logic. A mission statement is designed to give a bird's-eye view of an organization's purpose and objectives. A strategic plan must have clear, actionable goals that the organization aims to achieve. This is lacking in the strategic plan. Strategies are approaches and actions that will be taken to reach those objectives. The strategic plan does not include any of those. Evaluation, which is what the Task Force was directed to do, dealt nothing with the things that listening committee-- nothing with the things that listening committees -- listening teams created. Let me quote from a document that was inherited by your current staff. "Struggle with how to address conflict, triangulation, and being passive aggressive. People tend to be patient and not reactive in the moment. The culture of the auto industry unions striking and protesting. When handling conflict, we tend to take it very personal. A mentality of 'Don't make your problem my problem' and expect ourselves to rise to the challenge of solving our own problems. A mentality of 'What's in it for me, why it is beneficial for me to be bothered by. Transactional instead of transformational.'" History of racial conflict. The budget shortfall. The task force acknowledges that the new model does not bring the budget into balance. The deficit of $300,000, even if the entire staff was fired, everybody, we would still be in the red. Therefore, this proposed model lacks evidence from comparable presbyteries because we are the 14th largest Presbyterian in this denomination. The task force did not provide substantial data or case studies demonstrating that a reduction in positions would lead to increased efficacy. Therefore, I stand to rise against the motion. Thank you, moderator.
Thank you. I don't know if you could hear her. Barbara Flint, Brandon Mill Church, called the question.
Second.
It's been seconded. All right, we have a motion to call the question. All in favor, raise your hand. And on Zoom, if you're voting to call the question, use the raise hand feature. Are we done counting the hands in this room? No, this is just calling the question, right. I believe we're done counting. We're done counting. Can somebody nod? Thank you, those of you whose arms got tired. I appreciate it. Yes. All right. Let's put down -- do we have a count of the hands up on Zoom? We clearly do not have a majority of hands up on Zoom. We don't -- we're not even close on Zoom. Right. Pardon me? All right, those in the room? Okay, those in the room who wish to vote no on calling the question, raise your hand. I appreciate you all's patience with the voting process that we have to go through with all of these different locations. I can really believe that it's very frustrating, and I just really appreciate your being patient with us. So the question, I'm told the question has been called. It's -- was it two-thirds on the affirmative? On the -- more than, I'm told. All right. Okay, okay, it was more than two-thirds, I'm told. All right, the question has been called. Now, people are handing out ballots. We're going to do this by written ballot. Please mark your ballots, and as I said earlier, please don't fold your ballot. It makes it take longer to process. Yes, launch the poll. And we're passing out ballots here. The parliamentarian has just reminded me of something very important. On this vote, yes means adopting the first motion of the report. Got that? No means rejecting -- you reject the motion, the first motion of the report. So as long as we're straight on that. Thank you, Mr. Parliamentarian. We've kind of wandered around a little bit, and I'm afraid I got lost.
Do all of our voting members have a ballot? Is there anybody that does not have a ballot who is eligible to vote? Thank you.
Has everyone's ballot been collected? Didn't we launch the poll? Oh, it's asking me how I vote. I'm not. I will point out, for those who feel like they need it, that Bob Dylan is in the room, available for pats and cuddles. There's something so humanizing about having a dog among us. I don't know if everybody feels that way, but I really do. I think businesses that let people bring in their dogs just have a whole different atmosphere. And Bob Dylan is showing -- what? Oh, I'm sorry. It was nonsense, but what I was saying was, Bob Dylan, the black hound that's wandering around, is in the room and available for pats and hugs for those who need it. Having a dog in the room is a lovely, lovely thing, and I was just going to point out that he's here. Oh, I'm good. I have dog treats. If Bob Dylan comes by, he's in luck. We're counting. This might be a good time for people who might want to go get a snack, but don't leave the room. How are you so serene? Can I please have your attention? We have our answer. We had 97 votes in yes, 66 votes against. The motion passes. Hang on one second because I want to -- I think it would be helpful if I ask our stated clerk to say a word of prayer, just briefly.
Can you all hear me? I'm going to start by reading Matthew 18:20. "For where two or three gather in my name, I am there with them." Let us pray. Lord, we believe in the power of your presence. We trust that you are with us, guiding and directing our meeting. Thank you for being here with us. Now, let all of God's children say, "Amen."
Thank you. We are now moving on to action on motion two. I'm calling Jen Rowe to the microphone to present the motion.
Thank you, moderator. Again, my name is Jen Rowe. I am a ruling elder from the Presbyterian Church of Fredericksburg. I draw your attention to the motion we would like to present, number two. If item one is adopted, the Presbyterian of the James directs the Mission Council to implement the action adopted by a) creating appropriate job descriptions for the new positions which are to be approved at a meeting of the Presbyterian prior to any release to prospective candidates; b) working with the appropriate committees nominating and/or personnel to begin the search process for these positions following job description approval by the Presbyterian; c) developing the appropriate timing of the transition from the existing model to the newly adopted model in order to provide little to no loss of continuity for the Presbyterian and the needs within the office, all while keeping current staff informed as to exactly how the transition is progressing and obtaining their feedback for consideration. Reports to the Presbyterian should be made on at least a monthly basis via the best means possible.
All right. We would now entertain people to speak against and in favor. I would prefer to start with somebody in favor, just for the novelty of it. Is that you? We have a question for clarification coming forward.
Jess Cook, teaching elder interim at Westminster Richmond and organizing at Every Table. I just have a question if this also includes what to do if our executive staff resigns now. I just had a question if that was part of that process. So just, it puts a lot on Mission Council --
Absolutely.
-- to begin if it starts now. Thank you.
Our motion does not address that. I don't want to make, you know, presume anything without it having gone out, and we did not talk about that within the task force discussions.
Do you have a question or you want to speak? Okay, let me take a question first.
Laura Sugg, pastor at South Plains Presbyterian Church in Keswick. I want to thank the task force. I also want to thank Flo and LeAnn. I can't say that enough. This is not an us and them. This is everyone working together. My question is, and the reason why I felt it might be helpful to discuss that substitute motion, is the question of severance and timeline. Could that, and maybe that's an amendment, I don't know, but could that be addressed in the motion that we vote on today? Because I really care about Flo and LeAnn, and I feel like that's -- we owe a clear timeline and a clear severance.
I'm going to say, I'm getting an indication that the man with the motion may have something to say about that.
Again, Mark Hedberg from River Road. I have an amendment to motion number two, and I have --
Bellow it out.
I move to amend motion number two by adding at the end of it the following language. Additionally, in light of the effect of this change in staffing -- in light of the effect this change in staffing model will have on the current presbyterians of the Presbyterian of the James, a severance package for the individuals currently serving as lead presbyter for vision and collaboration and as presbyter for relational care shall be provided for a period of not less than one year at their respective current compensation levels and including such other benefits as the Mission Council may approve.
May I ask you a question about your motion?
You may.
Since you're not addressing or changing something, you said that they said, you're adding something to it. Am I correct?
I am moving to amend the motion by adding that sentence at the end.
What I was going to ask was, could we treat it as a standalone --
No.
All right. That's -- I just wanted to, because that was an option. Thank you. All right, we have an amendment on the floor. I need a second. Okay, that was enthusiastic. Sorry. No, we appreciate enthusiasm. People are having trouble hearing. Would you like me to read it again? Okay, I'm hearing yes louder than I heard no. I'm just checking the -- additionally, in light of the effect this change in staffing model will have on the current presbyterians of the Presbyterian of the James, a severance package for the individuals currently serving as lead presbyter for vision and collaboration and as presbyter for relational care shall be provided for a period of not less than one year at their respective current compensation levels and including such other benefits as the Mission Council may approve. Come to the microphone. If you aren't at the microphone, the people on Zoom don't have a prayer of hearing what you're saying.
Given everything that has happened and given everything that staff has been Given everything that has happened and given everything that staff has been through for these past many months, they deserve some certainty. They deserve some respect. They deserve some recognition. In my mind, this is literally the least we could do.
Thank you, Mark. Does anybody else wish to speak to Mark's amendment? I've got this right, right?
I have a question.
Okay, sir. Step to the microphone if you don't mind.
Jim Elliott, Westminster Presbyterian Church, Richmond, Virginia. I would, wondering if, if, aren't, this is a personnel matter, a human resources type matter, and I would, I would imagine that issues such as severance are probably addressed in either a human resources or personnel handbook that the Presbyterian can use as a guideline. If, if I'm out of order or if that's not the case, then I stand corrected, but it seems to me that this would be something that would go back to personnel.
Jess, do you have an opinion on that? No. No. Okay. We'll talk later. What I would say to that is, I don't know off the top of my head whether we have a policy specifically addressing severance. I do know that if we had such a policy, it's passed by the Presbyterian. This is the highest deciding body. And whether or not we have in place a policy shouldn't, I don't think, preclude this body making this decision in this case. It would set a precedent, perhaps. I don't know. It's not my area of expertise. As you can tell, my area of expertise tends to exert me at this moment. In any case, I don't know the answer to whether we have one, but I don't think that's an obstacle to if the body wants to do this. Does that sound reasonable to you guys?
Moderator, Tom Coy. May I speak? I am a member of the Personnel Committee. And, and we did study the personnel policies in preparation as a task force, so we do have some familiarity with what the policy says. And I got to say that when it comes to a matter such as what we've done here, which is essentially not dismissing employee for performance issues, but simply because structurally we have chosen to eliminate a position, it gets real ambiguous at the end. There's very little guidance in the policy there. There is some guidance in terms of severance for regular resignations and things like that, but not for that. And the other hand is, my guess is, the Presbyterian can overrule the policies because it's our policies. So if we vote on that tonight, then we say for this case, that's our policy.
Thank you, Tom. Sir?
Moderator, I'm Keith Curran, honorably retired, serving as parish associate at Fairfield Church. And I believe this is just a question and maybe going along with Tom's information in, I'm trying to get this right. In the severance package, would it be appropriate for the Presbyterian to include information such as if they receive another call or another position that would include the severance or, and I've seen this before, the severance goes all the way to the end of that term, whether they get a new call or not. So I'm just lifting that up as an issue that should be negotiated.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Can I sit you down for a minute and, and call on her because she was up there waiting? I apologize.
Carla Pratt Keys, pastor at Guinner Park Presbyterian Church. Shall I proceed or no?
Yes.
Mine is, mine is kind of a question.
We're getting, oh, go for it.
You all in the initial report were recommending a six-month severance as an attempt to be generous and fair. I, I was curious about why you all removed that recommendation from this report.
Thank you. I'm going to take one. I've got two people on Zoom that want to speak. Oh, yes.
I've got a news.
Oh, okay. We have some information coming forward. Thank you.
Good evening, moderator. Crystal Varner Parker, minister member, Providence Forge Church in New Kent. We do not have something that states pertaining to presbyters, but in regards to pastoral relationships, on its appendix X dissolving pastoral relationships, guidance to congregations on severance. So we do have some guidance in the realm of the Presbyterian. I would say that the task force was more generous in what they recommended at the first listening last time, and so that's something to take into consideration, but it does state that for when staff reduction requests by congregation, request by session, one month of salary, housing, one month's notice for every year served. So this would definitely be more than generous in comparison to what our policy on our website states.
Thank you. I've got people online. Ah, sure.
Mike Watson, Fairfield Church and member of the task force. As a way to answer that, we, we did choose to take severance out of there, not because we didn't believe it should happen. I think all of us absolutely think it is the right thing to do in this situation and affirm that. We felt six months was the right timetable, so me, I, for me speaking personally as a voting member, and, and that way, I guess I would speak against and recommend six months or at least some language of until they get a new call. But in terms of the task force, I think we, we realize the Personnel Committee, we believe they would act in that, that light, but I think, you know, as Presbyterian deems to, to give guidance, I think we all affirm that as well, however we decide to go through with it. Again, giving them something along those lines, I think is something we affirm.
Thank you. Tom Shields, I think I have you next. Do you want to unmute yourself and speak?
I'm Tom Shields, ruling elder, co-Presbyterian church. And I think rather than being specific in what we say, I mean, this, like I, like was heard before, it's a personnel matter. I, I think including something that severance should be awarded, but leave it to the, the, the Mission Council or the POJ's guidance to, to, to judge how that would be done.
Thank you. I have another hand up. Gordon Lindsay, would you want to unmute and speak?
Gordon Lindsay, teaching elder, honorably retired. I'm all in favor of a generous severance package because I think the presbyters have done the kind of job that they deserve, that kind of support. However, I want to raise a comment, and that is that if we go with this, we postpone, I understood that the, the change in staffing was due to concerns about the budget deficit. This postpones dealing with the budget deficit for another year.
I have somebody with his hand up in the room.
David Ross, ruling elder at Guinner Park Church. I'm speaking against the amendment for many of the same reasons that we've heard. We're dealing with a financial problem, and we would just be exacerbating that by agreeing as a body to a one-year severance package. I mean, maybe that's what will be agreed to by the Personnel Committee, but I think for this body to take that on is really inappropriate and would be inconsistent with the concepts of what we're trying to solve here, which is a financial problem for the Presbyterian. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two hands up. Come on.
I'm Jerry Zucker, ruling, ruling elder for Fredericksburg Church, and I want to go against the motion here, not because of the severance, but more we're dealing with a financial situation. And I really worry if we have, we spend too much money on the severance, that we don't have the resources to be able to re-recruit and we can move on. So we will put ourselves in a more of a burden to move on about this hard decision. I will reflect, any severance be deferred to the Personnel Committee.
Thank you. Sir?
I'm Gary Hatter, minister member at Waddell Miss Presbyterian in Rapid Inn. I wonder if we might have a, a little bit of a slightly different take on it if we offer a six-month severance but effective January 1st, as in the model, staffing model changes effective January 1st. They serve out whatever of that they can or, or willing to do, and that would also commence their job search more or less on January 1st, not going into the holidays, which is a terrible time to be looking for a new call. So I wonder if that might be a way to address it. Extend it a little more than six months, which a lot of that is the holiday period, but it make the effect, the effective change January 1st.
So that would be an amendment to the amendment. Right? We don't--
Okay.
All right. Jess, do you have what you need?
I have amended motions that is the language that Mark Hedberg proposed. So amended motion that said, but it is, then it means for a period of not less than one year.
And now we have an amendment to that amendment. It's been proposed. It hasn't, I understand it hasn't been seconded. I'm just trying to make sure we have what we need when we need it. Has it been turned in in writing?
Not the second part. Originally proposed, we've got that in writing.
Sure, yeah. Could you, could you write up?
Motion forms are up here on the table.
The forms are up here, if that's-- While that's going on, sir, you would be speaking to the original amendment, correct?
Thank you, moderator. I speak in favor of the original amendment. I understand that we have lots of financial concerns in this Presbyterian. I understand that we've been spending money faster than we've been bringing it in. Those are legitimate points, but we are talking about people here, people whom God has given us to lead us and people who are now no longer in the room, probably, and I would expect because of the actions of this body. And so I speak in favor of a motion that amends the report to take care of the people who have left the second row of this room and gone out someplace else. A year of severance is the least we can do in a way that does justice to the people who have led us as faithfully as they could during their time with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I failed to identify myself. I'm Joseph Tabor from Culpeper Presbyterian Church. Thank you.
All right. We are still waiting on the arrival of the amendment to the amendment. Oh, I have someone to speak.
Linda Smiley from--
Closer.
Linda Smiley from Gate and Kirk Presbyterian Church.
You can't hear you speak up.
Okay, Linda Smiley from Gate and Kirk Presbyterian Church, and I have a question. Can you, can it be stated exactly how much we're talking about dollar-wise for a year of severance?
Cindy, do you have that number?
Carrie's got a copy of it.
Oh, Carrie's got that number.
You want me to read it?
Yeah. All right, so how does this going to fit into, where's the other motion to do what they want to do in the package? Lead presbyter, that name? That's--
So, based on what they're currently being paid, what they're asking for, for the year of, of severance would be $173,644 for the lead presbyter and $133,517 for the other presbyter.
And does that, does that include the benefits factor as well?
Yeah.
That's, that's everything.
Yeah, that is, that is a fully loaded number, full benefits.
Okay. Okay. And, and is the norm in the Presbyterian church, when you're offering severance, to do a year regardless of whether or not they get another position? No.
I don't know that there is a norm.
Okay.
But this is also a rather extraordinary circumstance.
So regardless of whether, I guess is the motion regardless of whether they get another position or not during that one year, they would get the severance.
The motion does not include that. That is true. The motion does not say anything about if they got another position in the meantime.
So regardless. Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute. I have a quest, hang on a second, I have a question on Zoom. Karen English?
Yeah, Cara English, member of large, I have a question about the kind of employment our presbyters are. We never had an installation, so I'm assuming they're not considered installed ministers. They're not, are they under a covenant or we simply, Presbyterian is the employer of our presbyters?
Jess, can you answer that?
Yeah.
They are employees of the Presbyterian. They are not called and installed.
This is almost--
They are called. I'm trying to get, they are called.
But they were never installed?
They're called to a validated ministry.
Okay. Okay. So it would follow the protocols more closely to an installed pastor or, you know, any other kind of employment in terms of a validated ministry, say a chaplain at a hospital or something like that? What's the employment law around this is what I'm asking, I guess.
Boy, are you outside of my wheelhouse.
Which is why I'm concerned about us making this decision.
Oh, thank you.
Amy Starredwine, First Presbyterian Richmond. I'm afraid I don't have an answer for Cara's question, but I will just say that after the July 30th meeting, as the task force looked at our recommendation in light of the comments both at the meeting and that were received after the meeting, including some recommendations around concerns about employment law and the implications, that was why we crafted the second motion, to return this to the Mission Council, which has oversight of personnel through the Personnel Committee, that we felt was best suited to this task of determining whether there should be severance and if so, for how long and what the parameters of that would be.
Thank you.
That sounds like a logical place to put it. That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Albert Canet, Providence, Powhatan County. I just had a question for clarification, if the current presbyters can be considered in an open search for the new, these staff positions? That might be helpful for people to know. So there may not, there could be a transition other than a termination, yeah.
Speaking on behalf of the task force, we, we talked about this a lot, and, and yes, they're certainly eligible from our, our point of view. I don't know if there's a legitimate kind of stay away period that has to be done before they could apply for a new position, but in terms of they themselves, we'd never solve a problem with them applying for the new--
If I'm not mistaken, they did some research, some of the, the stated clerk and others did some research on whether they were eligible to apply for other jobs, and they are. We don't have any policies regarding that. So where are we, guys? I'm told we're still trying to figure out how to make it work. Oh, forgive me, I have somebody that wants to explore.
Moderator, Clay McCauley, a minister member at River Road Church. If it's in order, I move the previous question on the amendment to the amendment.
On the amendment, the amendment to the amendment hasn't been seconded yet, I do not believe. Right. We can't move, we can't call the question on the second, on the amendment to the amendment because the amendment to the amendment has not been seconded. It's not on the floor. We're, we're discussing while we wait for them to get it ready to put it on the floor.
Moderator, may you please ask--
Moderator, may you please ask if there is a second right now? To the, to the Second Amendment.
All right, yes, I can certainly call to see if there is a second. Is there a second to the Second Amendment? I thought he did make it. Okay, Alex, I'm told that they haven't got the wording down on the Second Amendment. I understand that the time is going by, I really do.
The amendment that's on the floor will be changed to read as follows. Additionally, in light of the effect this change in staffing model will have on the current presbyterians of the Presbyterian of the James, a severance package for the individuals currently serving as lead presbyter for vision and collaboration and as presbyter for relational care shall be provided for a period through June 30th, 2025, at their respective current compensation levels and including such other benefits as the mission council may approve.
Pardon? 30th. And I'm going to put this in your file right now.
Okay, so that is not the wording that is up on the screen. I know, you need time.
Jim Elliott Westminster Richmond. So if it's six months from January the first.
No, that's not the motion that's being presented.
It's through June 30th of 2025.
One year, we're changing the one year to a period that ends on June 30, 2025.
Beginning when?
Hang on, yes. We know that. It hasn't exactly been moved yet, even. Because we didn't have anything else to do while they were getting the wording straightened out, and that has taken longer than we might have expected. Is that fair? I understand. No, not at the moment. We will have an opportunity to understand that. Pardon me? All right, we have the wording?
Yep.
All right, we're going, we're going to ask. I'm fine, I'm fine. Okay, we're going to ask him, let me read it, that's fine. Additionally, in light of the effect this change in staffing model will have on the current presbyterians of the Presbyterian of the James, a severance package for the individuals currently serving as lead presbyter for vision and collaboration and as presbyter for relational care shall be provided for a period through June 30th, 2025, at their respective current compensation levels and including such other benefits as the mission council may approve. That is the motion, and I think it's fair to say that is his motion. He's moving it. Correct? There he is, correct. So we have a motion. Now, is there a second? If there is someone, pardon me? Did I hear someone say second? All right, the motion has been seconded. We need a motion on the amendment to the amendment. Do we have a poll ready to go up for Zoom? Through June 30th, that wording. Yes, we'll do this, we're going to do this by hand. Is there any discussion of the motion? Okay, okay. We can, yes, we're going to have discussion, so come forward, thank you. Appreciate your patience.
Seth Lovell, Minister Member, Olivet Presbyterian. So what I heard Reverend Hatter say was, beginning January 1st, assuming that our presbyterians continue to serve in that capacity. I know the motion has changed, but I think the, what there's confusion about is, when does this severance package begin? So I'm also moderator of COM. When do we lose our executive staff? I would love to know that, and I think others probably would as well.
The motion as it's currently worded does not address that question. So if they leave tomorrow, it starts tomorrow, based on the motion. Wouldn't you assume that that's right? All right, what I'm being told. Okay. What I'm being told is, the motion on the floor does not address when it starts, but it is not changing anything about the way the, the motion below was worded in that regard. So when they start, when they leave, if they leave, if they leave at all, when they leave, it starts at that time and goes through with the Second Amendment. It goes through June 30th, 2025. Do I have that right? Carrie, did you want to say something?
Carrie Foster, pastor at Amelia Presbyterian Church, Vice Moderator of Mission Council and Moderator of the Budget Subcommittee. From sitting and listening, it became rather apparent to me that trying to legislate in meetings, a exit interview and staff appraisal and monetary things lies beyond the ability of this group of people to do. We do actually have the mechanisms in place. We have policies already in place to address all of these issues. Perhaps we could trust the people of the mission council and personnel to work diligently with our two presbyterians and also work on behalf of the Presbyterian to come to some type of an applicable decision. I cannot think that motion after motion is going to bring us any closer to resolution tonight without having harmful effects on those who are departing and from those who remain.
So in sum, you're speaking against the amendment to the amendment. I think he was next. And haven't you already spoken, Seth?
Yeah, well, it was to follow up to Carrie.
I got called out pretty fiercely from the last meeting about people speaking more than once, so I'm trying to be good about that.
Moderator Joseph Tabor, Culpeper Presbyterian Church. I speak against the amendment to the amendment. I think June 30th is insufficient. I think a year is appropriate. This, I, for all the reasons that I said earlier, I think 12 months of severance is appropriate. We are, reserves are measured in millions, and the cost to this is measured in hundreds of thousands. Seems like I read somewhere, perhaps Deuteronomy, that talks about tithes, about how 10% being set aside to take care of leadership and those in need is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all need stilts.
All right. We need to launch a poll on the amendment to the amendment, and then we're going to vote in this room with a show of hands. Those in favor of the amendment to the amendment in this room, please raise your hand. Tellers will count. Those of you on the phone, do we still have people on the phone? Those of you on the phone who wish to vote in favor of the amendment to the amendment, please press star nine now. All right. Assuming we can count two hands from the phone. Those of you in the, are you ready for me to call for the hands against? Not yet, okay. Y'all give me a high sign when I can call for the votes against. There's a high sign. All right, those of you in the room who are voting against the amendment to the amendment, please raise your hand now. Those of you on the phone who are voting against the amendment for the amendment, please press star nine now. That was. I should have thought to put some rum in my Coke. The amendment to the amendment fails. 26 in favor, 99 opposed. Lovely, thank you. We are back to the amendment as proposed by Mark Hedberg. I've got my back, do we have any hands up on, to speak? All right, are we ready to call the question? Okay, let's do that. Pardon me? Apparently we need a second to get ready to launch a poll. Pardon me? Yeah, oh, yes, right. A second as in. Yes, we need some time. I'm glad you all are seeing the humor in some of this. Ready to launch? Okay. Those, we're voting on the amendment to the original motion two from the report, that essentially adds a year of severance to what the report called for. Clear? Perfect. The poll has not launched, or it has? There it is, okay. In the room, all those in favor of the, of the amendment, please raise your hand now. On the phone, if you are in favor of the amendment, please press star nine now. I think you can put your hands down now. Thank you. All right. Are we ready to call for hands against? Yes. In the room, all those who are opposed to the amendment, please raise your hand now. On the phone, if you are opposed to the amendment, please press star nine now.
Okay, I think it's counted, right? Oh, no, no, no. Oh, you got them.
Okay, you can put your hands down, thank you. That means, yes, Joel, you too. We've put Joel to sleep. Well, it's good that you have somebody with you to keep you in line. Yes, sir. All right, we have, excuse me. The motion has failed. The motion on the First Amendment failed. 47 in favor, 99 against. So we are back to the original motion two from the report. Do we have anybody looking to speak? Okay. Do we have, oh. I think you have, no, I guess you spoke to an amendment. Sorry, I'm just trying to. For those of you on Zoom, Mike just jumped up to raise the mic for him.
Thanks, Mike, he's an old college buddy. Moderator Joseph Tabor, Culpeper Presbyterian Church. I promise I'll shut up after this. I have an amendment to this motion. Yeah, I hear you. I have sent it on to the stated clerk. It adds the following language immediately before item C of this.
Say it slowly.
The amendment would add the following language immediately before item C of the recommendation two, that the search for new candidates begin by offering the new positions to our existing presbyterians.
All right. Do we have a second? Do we have, I can't see whether we have a second from anybody on Zoom.
I do not see one on Zoom.
Okay, then the motion fails for lack of a second. We are back to. We are back to motion two from the report. Sorry, my mind just left me.
I was raising my hand.
Oh, okay, we do have somebody online, thank you. Sarah Shutey? Would you run meet and speak?
Yes. I don't know if this needs to be added as an amendment or merely just a comment. As we send this to the appropriate committees, could those individuals doing such work hear that the will of the Presbyterian is to be as generous as possible, as, as gracious as possible? We've had a year, we've had six months starting in January, but every which direction, could we just say, as we put this to the appropriate committees, would you hear that we want to err on the side of generosity and graciousness, especially considering these circumstances? So parliamentarians, if there's an action I need to take to say that, tell me what to do, but I just needed to speak that into this. As we're sending it on to the appropriate places, hear the will of this body that we be as generous. be as generous as we can.
I think it's fair to say, since we have the Chair of Personnel and other members of Personnel here, that they heard your message. All right. You ready to call? Oh, I'm sorry, somebody has her hand up?
Hello. Kellyanne Riel, Teaching Elder, working out of bounds. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Teaching Elder, working out of bounds currently, but currently co-moderator of the COM. I was waving and doing everything I could because I couldn't find my little hand thing on -- I have a very old computer, so I apologize to the full Presbyterian, but I second Joseph's amendment.
We've -- yes, I'm sorry, we've already voted on it. Oh, wait a minute.
We have not voted on Joseph's amendment.
You were seconding the amendment?
Yes, I was trying to, but nobody could.
Okay. Right, right. Just to remind people on Zoom, we have four screens full of faces and that --
Oh, totally understand. I just wanted to get people's attention, that's all. Totally understand.
All right. We -- I'm concerned about time. We have one more whole motion to go. It is five minutes after eight. I know, I know. I'm not -- yeah. No, that's fair. I'm concerned about time. We have a second for the motion. No, we've already declared the motion as having failed without a second. We have called the question on the second motion from the report. Are we ready to launch a poll? No, the amendment -- The amendment failed. Reverend Clark just asked for clarification on what we're doing. At this point, we have dealt with both amendments to the motion, to the original motion in the report, motion number two. So we are back to acting on motion number two as presented by the task force. Everybody agree with that's where we are? We have limitations in our technology. I'm doing the best I can. I feel like we need to move on. Ready to launch a poll? Okay, yes, the poll is launched. We are now, those in the room who are in favor of the second motion as presented in the report, please raise your hand. Those of you on the phone who wish to vote in favor of the second motion, please press * 9 now. You can put your hands down, thank you. Are you ready for me to call for hands against? All right, those in the room who would like to vote opposed to the second motion in the report, please raise your hand now. Those on the phone who wish to vote in opposition, please press * 9 now. You want to run over and get the results? Thank you. The motion carries, 126 in favor, nine in opposition. Motion two carries. Thank you. We are now ready to move on to motion three. Tom Coy, who's already poised to speak to you.
Moderator, our third motion of the evening is the Presbyterian of James shall create a special committee of five individuals who do not currently hold position on any POJ Committee Council or Commission, and shall be nominated by the nominating committee and approved at a Presbyterian meeting no later than the February 2025 stated meeting for the purpose of establishing a financial sustainability policy that explores ways to create a balanced budget by suggesting revenue enhancements, cost reductions, and/or other combinations of ways by which the Presbyterian becomes financially stable. This policy should be clear and concise guidelines for budgeting, investments, and use of all Presbyterian designated funds that are held in reserves. We took this cue for a fresh policy to get a hold of our situation from the Synod of the Mid-Atlantic. We had talked to Warren Lussain about how the Synod had tidied up its finances because it was facing some critical situations, and they did this kind of thing as well. They got a handle on the policy by taking a long look, got some people who could comment on it, offer suggestions, and came up with a set of policies that helped to make for far better stewardship for the Synod to the point that it is financially sustainable now. We liked what we heard. We think that this is appropriate now for our Presbyterian to have a special group to consider these -- to consider these considerations. On page nine of our report, we have the two critical funds from which our deficit is being funded, the CMDF and the GGF. And at this point, this drawing down about $719,000 this year, and will continue to do that if we had sustained the three Presbyterian model. By moving on to what we are doing at this point with a reduction of staff positions, we think we're going to save about $200,000 from there, which is good. If we have a -- if we take some of the earnings from the investments, that's another $200,000 that could help out, that's $400,000. That's still $300,000 to go. And this is the problem. We still have a very large deficit that is eating away at these reserves, much of which are there to help our churches with their expansion efforts and their financial efforts. These are loans. We need to have at least $2.3 million in hand right now to guarantee the loans that the Presbyterian has made on behalf of churches in the Presbyterian. So there's a bottom. There is a bottom coming up. We are $4.3 mil now, $2.3 is what we need. We have wiggle room, but we might need to find ways to stewardship those funds so that we can be in for the long term for both mission and for staffing. So this is our presentation to establish this group to come up with policies with the included suggestion of a per capita, perhaps, to look at that as a revenue source, to challenge churches for greater income, begin to look at reductions of expenses, further expenses. These are all the things we would like this group to consider and report back to the Presbyterian.
Thank you, Tom. Carrie, are you standing there to speak on this motion? Well, why don't you come do that?
Carrie Foster, Millie Presbyterian Church, Vice Moderator, MC, Budget Moderator. The motion is fine, but for lack of a better word, a little bit too -- it misses the point in a sense. We're taking expenses and then income and trying to have one body determine both things. You know, we're worried about cutting costs is one thing, but then worrying about how to raise revenues, and a Presbyterian is very limited in the way it can raise revenues. You know, short of branding ourselves and lending out our name for venues or whatnot, we don't have that type of resource. I think it's just a little bit too narrow in the approach. We need to have a far more dedicated group of people looking at the means to enhance revenue, which will mean actually going out into the field, meaning our congregations in person, and begin having conversations there because we rise or fall with whatever our congregations provide for us. And there is obviously there's a big disconnect. I would hopefully think we should try and split the two things apart, get five folks here and five folks there. But it's too much to ask, and the task force knows what it's like to have too much asked of you for a short amount of time. And so we should consider our approach to this at least two pathways.
Anybody? Ah, Reverend James.
Janet James, Moderator of the Mission Council, Pastor of the Gatenkirk. This is just kind of like a -- I want to say this. The budget, we're getting it ready to present and hand out at the October -- at the end of the October meeting for the first read. So I'm having PTSD about the past two years because we're still going to be bringing forth a budget that has a huge deficit. And so I just want everyone to know, it's not from us being irresponsible. We're in this situation of -- and so everyone's going to have -- we're going to have the third year of talking about how we are spending money that we really don't have. So I just had to say it, you know?
I'm glad you did, yeah. No, I think that's the urgency we need to feel. And Carrie, I would certainly hope that this group, as it considers the means of this Presbyterian and how we can do our work, would include that kind of an outreach to the churches. I think you're right. I think we need to consider all options, and we need somebody to kind of put it together. That's why we're asking for this group to do that.
Come forward.
Janice Baldwin, Elder, Gatenkirk Presbyterian Church. This is a huge undertaking, an amendment. There are several things that are very important. The visiting of the churches, the money that you have, the ways to raise new income. Because of the time limit that we are looking at at this point, and having sat here and listened to the conversations for the other two amendments that we have sat through tonight, I don't think it's fair to ask the people that are still here to try and vote. I think you should table this until the next meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Kellyanne Riel, would you unmute and speak to a certain --
Hey there, Kellyanne Riel, Teaching Elder, co-moderator of the Commission on Ministry. I like the motion, but I agree with Carrie, it's going to involve a lot more people. The call to congregations is important at this time. I mean, being a liaison to 10 congregations in our Presbyterian, I understand the giving and the giving that they are putting forth for the Presbyterian. And some of our smaller congregations are giving far more percentage than our larger. And this is going to take some tact and some insight and a lot of good people to be able to look at all these numbers and then go out and reach out, because we are supported by our congregations. So I just want to -- everyone to sort of think about that as Teaching Elders and Ruling Elders on this commission, what we can do to become a part of this. Because if we're not financially able to put forth a good staff and we keep depleting the staff, it all comes back to us volunteers, Teaching Elders and Ruling Elders, doesn't it? And believe me, we felt the weight of that over the last year, especially the commission, for several reasons. And so I just think that this needs more people and more forethought. And I agree with the last speaker that we might want to table this to the October meeting.
I haven't heard a motion to table.
Shall I make a motion to table to the next meeting?
Pardon me?
Postpone, excuse me, postpone.
We're not -- if we're going to another meeting, we're postponing it, not tabling it.
Yep, postponing. I agree.
All right. We have a motion to postpone. Do we have anyone else who wants to speak to it? Pardon me? Yes, we -- I'm sorry, we need a second. We have a second. I will tell you, we have 10 minutes left in this meeting. So are we ready to launch a poll on -- That's why we're ready to launch a poll on -- Does anybody have anything to say about launching -- about -- excuse me, I'm tired. Anything to say about debate on the -- on postponing to the, I guess, the October meeting? Which is our next meeting? October 19th?
Barclay Bradshaw, Ruling Elder, Three Chop. This matter should have been before us, probably a year ago. It probably should have been before us, before motion one and two were before us. I definitely do not think we should wait until October. It's disappointing that we need to wait till February to even have the group gathered together. I hope we can address this tonight. I would love to see some type of reporting deadline conclusion for this effort as well. But please do not wait any longer.
We have somebody on -- ah, Sam Adams on Zoom. Run mute and speak.
Yeah, Sam Adams, Union Presbyterian Seminary. I realize it's 8:20. I think the financial situation we find ourselves in, the hard work of the task force, and the precarious state of the POJ and our fractured situation right now, all speak to not postponing, to moving forward with the task force recommendation number three. Vote on that and to try to see if we can come back together as siblings in Christ.
Anyone else wish to speak to the motion to postpone? All right, are we ready to launch a poll on the motion to postpone? Yes. All right. Those in the room voting in favor of the motion to postpone, please raise your hand. Those on the phone who wish to vote in favor of the motion to postpone, please press * 9 now. We got our count? All right. Those in the room opposed to the motion to postpone, raise your hand. On the phone, if you're opposed to the motion to postpone, please press * 9 now. I saw that yawn. I saw that yawn. Can we put our hands down? Yes. All right, the motion to postpone fails, 18 in favor, 117 opposed. We are back to voting on motion three as presented in the report. Is there any discussion, any further discussion? I see. Yes, sir. We have a call for the question. And it's seconded. All right, all in favor, let me just let the folks on Zoom know that in the room, we have a motion to call the question. Do you need a poll for that? I'm just looking at. We're calling the question on motion three. Okay, we've got to wait for a second till we get a poll up on. No, you don't. I've got that. Hang with us, everybody. All right. All in favor of calling the question in the room, please raise your hand. Those on the phone wishing to vote to call the question, please press star nine now. I don't know whether all the blood is draining from people's hands. We've got some jazz hands going on out there. Can we take hands down yet? Hands down, thank you. All right, let's get a second. That means a moment. Ready to vote against? All right, all in favor, all opposed to motion three as presented in the, whoa, whoa, I'm sorry, forgive me. All those opposed to calling the question, raise your hand now. Thank you, everybody. It takes a village. Not that there was any question, but it's 137 in favor and two opposed. All right, we are back to the report's original motion three as presented, and I'm ready to know that Jess has, is ready to launch a poll. There it is. All right, all in the room in favor of motion three from the task force report, please raise your hand. Okay, you can put your hands down, thank you. Although I do enjoy the jazz. Are you ready for it? Okay, all in the room voting against the motion as presented in report, in the third motion in the report, please vote now by raising your hand. Those on the phone wishing to vote against motion three in the report, please press star nine now. Motion three carries, 133 in favor, four against. We have made it, and we have two minutes left in our meeting. You are all to be congratulated. Ladies and gentlemen, I do want to thank you with your patience with each other, and especially with me, as we navigated this crucial step in our governance. At this point, as they have completed the work they were requested to perform, the Strategic Plan Review Task Force is discharged with thanks from the Presbyterian for all their hard work.
Thank you, Jerry.
Getting through it is thanks enough. Having completed our agreed-upon business, I declare that the September 26th Special Meeting of the Presbyterian of the James is adjourned. I ask you to join Mr. Stated Clerk. Would you please close us in prayer?
I'm going to read from Numbers 6, verses 24 to 26. "The Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord make his face shine on you and be gracious to you. The Lord turn his face toward you and give you peace." Lord, we thank you for sending the Holy Spirit to be with us tonight. We thank you for your faithfulness and your steadfast love. We ask for your blessings upon everybody here as we depart from this place. And now let all of God's children say amen.
Safe travels, everyone. Good night.